You've been with me for a long time. What's up?
Ah. One last. But can you do this? Oh.
No.
Good evening, we're gonna call the Castle Hills Regular City Council meeting to order and determine if a quorum is present. A quorum is present, we will start with the invocation, we have somebody here special with us, a Castle Hills resident, Mr. Rene de Alejandro. Thank you so much for being here with us.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to serve in this community. We ask blessings upon the families that are represented here. Lord, the time and energy invested that you will give them as due. Bless them, Father, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen, thank you. Okay, next up, we have the Pledge of Allegiance, Captain Wagner, will you lead us?
My allegiance is this is why. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, Captain. Okay, we're gonna do a little change of order, we have first up a recognition of our police officers, Chief Zuniga.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens. Tonight, we'd like to recognize three officers that were dispatched to a call last month. And we'd like to recognize them for some life-saving skills that they demonstrated that night. On Sunday, January fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, at six eighteen AM, officers responded to a residential address in our city for an individual possibly experiencing a mental health crisis. Officers arrived at the residence and were met by family members, the family conveyed to the officers that they believe their child may have, may have been trying to harm themselves. And had locked themselves in the bedroom. Officers attempted to speak to the individual for a short time, but then realized that things may have become dire when the officers could hear a strange noise coming from inside the bedroom. It was at that time that officers decided to force the door open, and upon gaining entry, they discovered that the individual was unconscious. After administering first aid, the individual was then transported to the local hospital for further medical attention. The City of Castle Hills Police Department wishes to recognize Sergeant Raymond Castaneda. Officer Andrew De Nava and Officer Chris Ariola for their outstanding performance and life-saving actions that occurred on January fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Their actions reflect the highest standards of conduct for the law enforcement profession and bring great credit to the Castle Hills Police Department. Please help me recognize these officers.
Thank you, Chief. I think too often not enough of the stories go around about what our officers and all first responders here in Castle Hills have to deal with, so I, as sad as it is to hear, I appreciate knowing. Some of the stuff that they have to deal with and the difference they're making in the lives of everybody that they encounter. Next up, we have. The recognition for Captain Wagner.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. Wayne Wagner knew early on in his. Early on that he had a passion for law enforcement, which was evident when he enlisted in the US Army after graduation from high school. And served as a military police officer. Following his enlistment and being honorably discharged, he then attended the Police Academy and became a certified Texas Peace Officer. In nineteen ninety-six, Wayne joined the Helados Police Department and remained there for nearly four years before deciding to come on, come to an elite police department, the Castle Hills Police Department. On January fifth of two thousand. Since his tenure with the Castle Hills Police Department, Wayne was promoted to the rank of Corporal, Sergeant, and then Lieutenant. Following my appointment as a chief, I without hesitation promoted Wayne to the rank of Police Captain where he has served his position well. During his tenure, Wayne attended the Bill Blackwood Leadership Command College Program, which is a nine-week program broken up into three, three-week sessions around the state. And is fully funded by the State of Texas. Wayne also attended various other leadership courses. I must add that while attending all this training was not an easy task, it could not have been made possible without the support of his lovely wife, Heather Wagner. I wish, oh, you don't play that. This was the final send-off on the radio that was played on the last day that Wayne was here.
I don't. Chief Siemens, can you help us?
Captain Wayne Wagner, congratulations on your retirement. After twenty-eight long distinguished years as a Texas Peace Officer, we thank you for your service and unwavering dedication to keeping the community safe. As you retire from law enforcement, know that you leave behind a legacy of hard work, dedication, and bravery. Captain Wagner, it was an honor working with you. On behalf of the City of Castle Hills, we wish you the very best, and please know that you will be missed. Today, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, Act twelve fifteen, Captain Wayne Wagner, badge number five-five-five, triple nickel, is ten forty-two. God bless you, sir.
Captain Wayne Wagner, it is acknowledged and congratulate you for, on your distinguished twenty-eight-year career in law enforcement. Of which twenty-four were with the City of Castle Hills Police Department. Your dedication and leadership have been apparent to us all. Your contributions to the department's professionalism were always appreciated. We wish you many years of health and happiness in your new, in your well-deserved retirement. Thank you for a job well done. Please accept this shadow box as a small token of our appreciation and to recognize your professionalism and dedication to the citizens of Castle Hills. And the members of the City of Castle Hills and the Castle Hills Police Department.
Thank you, Captain Wagner, for everything that you've done for Castle Hills for the last twenty-four years. We know it hasn't been the easiest, but hopefully the impact that you made on our city and everybody that you've worked with. Is something that holds dear for you, so thank you. Next up, we have the firefighter anniversary, Chief Lottawig.
Mayor, Council, City staff, and residents, thank you for your time this evening, allowing me to recognize firefighter Matthew Wood, who has just completed his one-year anniversary with the department. Firefighter Wood served time in the Marine Corps prior to beginning his career in the fire service. He came to us with previous experience from the Marion Volunteer Fire Department. He's become a much-valued member of A-Shift, and we look forward to his continued career with the Castle Hills Fire Department. Firefighter Wood, would you like to come up, please?
Ranger, I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will obey the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I'll obey the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Texas.
And the Constitution of the State of Texas.
I will hold devotion to duty above personal risk.
I will hold devotion to duty above personal risk.
I will strive to protect the lives, homes, and property.
Will strive to protect the lives, home, and property.
Of the citizens and visitors of Castle Hills.
Of the citizens and visitors of Castle Hills.
From the havoc of fire and other disasters.
From the havoc of fire and other disasters.
Congratulations. You're just.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Real quick before the, everybody completely disperses, I want to take a personal point of privilege and recognize our soon-to-be new City Secretary, Mr. Nicole Henry. So just give a wave so everybody knows who you are. We're excited to have you join the family here soon. We're gonna jump into our consent agenda, do we have a motion? Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a consent agenda as stated.
Thank you, Mr. Ray, do we have a second? Second, Ms. Haley, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you, Council. First item is presentation, discussion, and possible action on fiscal year December, fiscal year end, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Annual financial report as prepared by Martinez, Rosario, and Company, LLP, Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, this item relates to the FY twenty-two audit being conducted by the auditor firm of Martinez, Rosario, and Company. Mr. Milo Martinez's firm conducted an audit for the City of Castle Hills for FY twenty-twenty and twenty-one financial years for the City of Castle Hills. This is the third year of their contract for FY twenty-two. Mr. Martinez is here today to provide a presentation and overview of the audit. I'd like to thank Ms. Wallace and Ms. Davis from our fiscal office who worked on this as well, and they're here for any questions after Mr. Martinez's presentation, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan, Milo Martinez. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council members. You should have a purple folder there in front of you with the packet that I've got for tonight. And the first item that I've got is the annual report, so it's about a sixty-page document. And on pages one through three is the independent auditor's report. And that report this year, as it's been in the past two years, is an unmodified or a clean opinion. On your financial statements, and the opinion is there at the very top. And so the first paragraph just talks that we audited all the financial activities and funds of the city. The second paragraph has got our opinion, and in there it just states, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the governmental activities. Each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of the city as of December thirty-one. And the respective changes in financial position for the year then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. So again, that's where you want to be, the clean opinion. The next paragraphs just talk about the basis of our opinion, the standards that we followed. There is an additional paragraph this year that says emphasis of matter there on page one. And there was a new standard that came out relating to leases called Gatsby eighty-seven. And so the city had to adopt it for this particular year. And so basically what we did is the, the contracts that you have for your, the billboards and the advertising that you have, all of that in the past. Was not, only if the income came in and you earned it, you would pick it up on your financial statements, well, the new standard requires you to set up. An asset and a liability, and then you have to account for those, and it's on a cruel basis, and so that. That implementation is in these financials, and I can take you to the page where you can see the large numbers, so it grossed up your numbers on the asset side, but there's also a corresponding liability. That that came in from that, and so if you, if you look at the. If you go to page twelve. Of the financial statements or the report, which is the statement of net position. The. On the. There it is. If you look halfway down the page, it says lease receivables, it's right before the capital assets, you see a four-point-four million dollar, that's the, what's called non-current. And then the current portion is right below property taxes, that's about two-hundred thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand dollars. So that's the value of the rent stream that you've got on those contracts, and so basically the standard said, you need to take those, all of those payments and then put a discount factor and. A future value and then discount it back to what the value is, and then there's a corresponding liability. And which is, you defer the revenue side, so if you go to page thirteen, I can show you the other side of the, of that entry. And so if you look at the deferred inflows, about again, right after total liability is about halfway down the page, there's a deferred inflows of resources. And the first one deals with taxes, the second one deals with the leases at four-point-three million dollars. And so the accounting. For this and the accounting that's there for the asset side varies, so you're gonna have a difference in the two balances, because you've got basically four-point-six million dollars on the asset side. And there's only four-point-three over here, but those get accounted for at the end, at the, after all of the leases have gone through and at the end where it's over the lease, then it would. Those are gonna even out, but it just, it requires entries that you have to go, and that's the new standard that they came up with. They delayed it several years, but they finally said anything that, the implementation date was in a year that started after. Middle of June of twenty twenty-one, so the first year that was your December thirty-one, twenty-two year. So that's the big, a big change for this year. You did, if you move on to page. To page sixteen. Sorry, not sixteen. Pardon me, that's the balance sheet, let me take it to page nineteen. And nineteen is. Your statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, but just a big number that you guys have been, so you can see that where the money's going, there's a capital outlay number there for four-and-a-half million dollars, so that's what you spent. To do construction and buy equipment and any assets for the, for the city. And so about four-point-two of that was construction and the rest was the, just other equipment and things for the city. But again, those are the big items, I think, I just wanted to share with you there, and. I don't have any other items to highlight, I don't know if, Ryan, you wanted me to point out anything in particular? On the numbers?
Not necessarily, I don't know, Ms. Wallace has any concerns or issues with the numbers? Okay, spoke to him already, so, I know, at this point, I think Council has questions.
Yes.
Council. Mr. Joyce.
Thank you, Mayor, thanks, Mr. Martinez. Just a, perhaps what might be a dumb question, in the past, I recall that there was a sort of a recounting of suggestions to perform better. For lack of a better term. Is there such a thing in this report this time, or is that no longer needed?
No, it's not in this particular report, I need to, I want to have a discussion with the city manager and Vicky and Ms. Davis on that. I mean, the items before, we had dealt with. The payroll software, accounting, fixed assets, fixed asset accounting, and just your accounting personnel, just having, you were running short and you've been trying to hire somebody, and you know, and that's. One of the things in the audit, we did have a lot more adjustments that we had in the past, it's. It, as far as the closing of the, of the books and even recording our adjustments from the previous year had not been done, so we had to spend time, you know, doing that, and we've had a lot more entries this year because we had to reconcile and correct balances. That were not stated correctly, so we've done all of that, at the end, the numbers are looking, you know, comparably from one year to the next, but when we, the numbers that we got to start auditing. We did a lot of work on them and had a lot of adjustments, and those adjustments are in, they're, they're behind the report that says communication with those charged with governance, so, but I think you're still. You know, had been looking for that person to have, you know, you've been running without a finance director, basically, so, and you've used different consultants, and I don't think there's much use this particular year, but I know Ms. Wallace, Vicky is, is working towards that, so. But, but again, we did have more, a lot more adjustments in this audit than we previously had.
Okay, thanks.
No other.
Council, do you have any other questions? Mr. May.
Again, this may not be a very intelligent question, but you talk about adjustments more than in previous years, can you define adjustment?
Well, basically, we'll, we'll look at your significant accounts, and we've come up with our own threshold of what we believe to be significant, let's say it's a hundred thousand dollar, you know, account, or then we'll set it for certain transactions. But our opinion is that multiple funds, so if you look in my report, you'll see some pages where we've got the, the general fund and the drainage and the, the capital projects. And then street funds, those are your major funds, so we take a harder look at those, and then you've got the smaller funds that you have for other items. And so our thresholds may be lower, but we wind up issuing an opinion at all those different levels, and so let's say we come in with a threshold and say, okay, this balance. Normally, we'll look at it, if it, and it, we set up the materiality thresholds by each fund, so each gets its right and appropriate attention, because we're, we're issuing an opinion on. so each gets its right and appropriate attention because we're issuing an opinion on like seven different items in your report. And so, and I can walk you through that, just can give you a feel for that. If you go to the, to the report, the first item that I was going over, that page on that statement, pages twelve, and then twelve and thirteen is the two pager, and then fourteen. So that's all the city operations put together, and those numbers are in on what's called a full accrual basis. So all of that, so we issue an opinion at that level. So the thresholds are much higher at this level, but we've already audited all the pieces that go into it. So we're coming along. If you turn to page, and I'm trying not to get too much into the weeds, but I'm just trying to kind of just give you a perspective on it. If you look at the pages where the, starting on page fifteen, so we've got, you know, the general fund, the bond, the street, the drainage, and then everything else is other. And so those four funds that are there are your, what's called your major funds. So we're issuing an opinion that the numbers in those columns are also good. So our materiality threshold gets reduced from what we saw on those first couple of pages that had everything. And so we would say, okay, let's say it's something that our threshold might be a couple of hundred thousand, let's say for the general fund. I'm just throwing out an example. And so then we'll say, okay, we'll look at transactions in that fund that over twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars. And so we look at balances, we look at the variations, then we look at certain balances that we know there's risk that could get misstated, so like revenues. So we look at almost, you know, we probably looked at eighty to ninety percent of your revenues, so make sure that we're happy to get that. If somebody's going to misstate something, because they're going to overstate revenues. The expenses, then we have a different threshold. Most of your expenses, a lot of it is, besides the capital that you had this year, are your salaries and benefits of that. And then we look at the others. We look at the trends, we'll drill into the accounts and see, okay, what are all the checks for the transactions for the year? And then we'll pick transactions from there. But for instance, sales tax, we looked at sales tax, and we had the reports that you get from the state controller. So we saw what they paid you for the police fund, and then the regular sales, and then your, there's a beverage tax, a small amount. So we see where those come in, and we reconcile that to the numbers. And so we found through those had been overbooked because there was more activity reported than should have been, so we adjusted some of those down. And so, and then we'll look at accounts that aren't moving. Why has the balance not changed from last year? Well, so we look at it, and it should have either reversed because it's an accrual entry, so that if it was payable, the cash went out, so the payable should be gone, or if it's a receivable, the cash came in, so that should be down. And then we see what you collected subsequent to the year to make sure that your receivables are established properly and that they're fully collectible. But generally, if you haven't collected something, we'll look at the window of at least ninety days. If you haven't collected something in ninety days, it's a pretty good chance that that's not going to come in, although there are long-term receivables that, and then you receive grants and other things. So we saw those monies, we vouched that they came in, and then that they were spent in accordance with the rules and the regulations on that.
So could part of the adjustments that you're noting for the uptick be explained by the code relief funds, for example?
Could they be explained by what?
Federal money.
Those were in good shape. Those particular funds and adjustments, those were, I mean, there wasn't any adjustments to that particular fund. And those didn't trigger any of the issues that we wound up adjusting on that. There were some transfers that went from that fund over to general fund, but those all, those were all within the accord of what you were doing for that. And so, and it had been approved by council, we saw where the approval occurred to transfer monies over and how they were being spent. But those are all well within the guidelines of the relief.
And adjustments doesn't trigger any concern, in your opinion, in your audit? Is that correct?
Well, my concern is just, you need to finish staffing so that you can, so the auditor, all we're doing is verifying. So we should be able to check and have, come in, you should come in. We don't have very many adjustments that, you know, some places we go and there's none. Others will have, you know, a moderate amount. But, you know, we wound up with about thirty-five adjustments just from the audit, whereas last year, I didn't get a chance to go back and count, but we probably were more like in the mid-teens to less than twenty. So it was quite a bit.
You said finish staffing? What does that mean?
Pardon?
You said finish staffing?
Well, just that you have, you know, you have some more assistance or help to keep to, at the end, to close the books or to close the monthly, so you've got, you know, an experienced, you know, finance person, because that's really what it needed, because I mean, there were, Nora does the best she's got, but she's not a trained accountant, she's not an accountant, she wears a lot of hats. And so it's all there, she's got the support, the backup, but how it got recorded in the general ledger was not necessarily the correct way. And so that's what we were doing, or there was changes in how some of the items got posted. So, but none of the prior audit adjustments had been booked. When we were given the numbers to start auditing, none of that had been reported, so, from the prior year.
How many adjusting journal entries do you typically see?
Well, again, for your history, I think we've been in the mid to high teens the last, the first two years, and this year we just had a lot more.
But outside of Castle Hills?
Outside of Castle Hills? It really varies. I've got some clients that got it all in good shape. We give them one or two or none, or, and then I've got others that, you know, I've had where it just goes on and on and on, so we're up to fifty or a hundred, it's ridiculous at that point.
So we're in the average, below average then?
I wouldn't say necessarily, I mean, we normally don't see clients that are at that. I'm just, there are extremes, but I would think you, you know, the, just kind of thinking through with the clients, you know, you're above the norm, what we normally see now. You know, I don't, I haven't seen surveys of what the industry, of what it's like, but, you know, what we've had experience, and we do about twenty-five to thirty audits. And so you're more in the high end as far as what we see on that. And, and some of them are significant that we made. And so, and then also some of the analysis that we wound up doing should have already, needs to be done in advance, like all your construction and all the purchase of equipment and assets. It was in the books, but it needs to get analyzed where you tell us, you have a threshold of five thousand dollars or higher that you're going to put it on the books and depreciate it. Well, there's other transactions that are smaller, but we go through there and look at that, and we test it. But, you know, we're the ones that are, that wound up coming up with the amounts that, you know, we're saying these need to be put on the books and depreciated over five years or ten years, or whatever the amounts are. All of that needs to be done in advance. We're, again, we're just checking that you did, you do it right. And also, then that needs to be what we've been recommending, to get some fixed asset software. Right now, it's just a spreadsheet, and it just, it, as you're getting bigger and you've got more dollars invested in there, because you've got, I think, a sixteen million dollars invested in capital assets right now.
Thank you. Mr. Rappley, you had a comment?
Just notes from my time here and during the audit process, I think our previous auditors would help more in that capacity for preparing whether we had a finance director or not being Nora or anybody else. I know Ms. Wallace has helped us in different capacities in the fiscal office, but I do know already that Ms. Wallace and Ms. Davis have already put together and prepared and are ready for the next audit coming up here soon. So we're ahead of the game coming up to FY twenty-three audit. I can tell you that.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Counsel, do we have any other questions? I understand that we need a motion to accept the audit. Is that correct, Mr. Schnell? Is that the verbiage?
Yes, from our end it does. There's some areas in the management discussion that I want to make sure that I get some feedback from council, I mean, the council from Ryan and Vicky and Nora. So they need to, because they, we need to make sure we've captured that, and then just one last look at the notes. But as far as the amounts and numbers, we're not looking to make any changes to that.
So there'll be a management letter within the next thirty days to wrap things up, but the report itself?
Yeah, these reports.
Balance sheets, financial statements in the report here are final.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we, the city council, adopt the annual financial report audit for the fiscal year ended December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
Mr. May, can we change that to accept the audit?
Accept.
Would you be amenable to that?
I endorse it.
Perfect. We have a second? A second? Second by Ms. Danes. Mr. Paul, did you have a question?
Good evening, Counsel. Frank Paul, one-twelve Shalimar. I came off council last May, and generally by that time, we always had the audit for the previous year. We're extremely late this time. I'm not saying why, I don't know. And the other thing, I mean, we're talking two-thousand-twenty-two audit. We still have to look at, obviously, coming up in the spring, hopefully it'll be sooner for the two-thousand-twenty-three. Now, that being said, the, we're sitting out here, and I didn't, I don't have privy, and you all probably have the information, if it's public. I didn't hear where we had an addition to or a subtraction from. Do we have a surplus from two-thousand-twenty-two? And see, if we had known if we had a surplus in two-thousand-twenty-two, when we were thinking about moving into the, we were, that's when we were changing over our fiscal period, and it helped a lot to make sure we knew ahead of time, instead of almost two years later, what the finances were. So I don't know, and I know the finance department, they were having a tough time with personnel getting everybody together and everything, and I know we've put a lot of pressure on them, and they did a lot of work for us, and I'm thankful for that. But those are the two things I'm concerned about. We're still talking twenty-two. We don't know if we have a surplus or not from twenty-two. So did we start behind the eight ball, or were we ahead of the eight ball for twenty-three? So this is just my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. So we have a motion on Mr. May, a second by Ms. Danes. Ms. Wallace, Ms. Davis, did y'all have any comments as our financial professionals?
I mean, I basically, Mayor and Counsel told Ryan, I said that they don't have the software to account for their fixed assets, nor could, if you remember Laura Fagins was here, so for the audit for twenty-one, she went out in July of twenty-one. And so that's kind of where the back, I think, what some of the issues were, but there is no fixed assets records that we had because the auditors previously had them. So I've asked him, we can do it, we just need the spreadsheet that they have to continue on and do it from that point forward, or get software that can, that you can put it in, such as ENCODE or something.
And so software, just to bring to, bring up my colleagues' speed, that's the ENCODE software we've been talking about?
Yes, sir, that is, yeah. Because they have a fixed asset component in there. I don't know if ASSIST does or not, I'm not too for sure.
I don't know.
Yeah, but I know, I know that ENCODE does. They, if not, then if he will give us his spreadsheet for the fixed asset, just most current, from that point forward, then it's, it would be easy to put it in, it's in a spreadsheet already. We just take any fixed assets that are sold, the depreciation should already be, there should be a formula in there to calculate it and so forth.
Perfect, thank you.
But we just need that in order to do it and do it properly, because we don't have anything.
Perfect, thank you. And colleagues, just so y'all know, we had voted to approve the purchase of ASSIST about five years ago, and that went sideways.
Purchasing ENCODE, not?
I'm sorry, ASSIST is what we have, ENCODE, and that changed, so maybe something for further consideration, but not agendized today, so just giving you some background. We have a motion by Mr. May, a second by Ms. Danes, on favor. Unanimous, thank you, Counsel. Thank you all for being here with us tonight. Next up, we have discussion of possible action on ordinance number two-thousand-twenty-four dash oh-two dash thirteen, calling a general election for the city of Castle Hills, Texas to elect three aldermen, making provisions for the conduct of the election, resolving other matters incident and related to such election, and providing an effective date to Ms. Craig.
This ordinance will call your election for the first Saturday in May, which would be May fourth.
Thank you, Ms. Craig. Counsel, do we have a motion? Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number two-thousand-twenty-four dash zero-two dash thirteen, calling for a general election, and as stated.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Joyce. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Counsel. Next up, we have discussion and possible action on resolution two-thousand-twenty-four dash oh-two dash thirteen, amending the council relations policy and code of ethics for the city council. Ms. Haley or Mr. Smith?
Counsel, we present to you tonight the amended and restated city code of ethics, excuse me, let me get the name right, the council relations policy and code of ethics for the city council. I do want to just say, before I get started, I want to thank council member May for his work previously on this, and I believe you worked with council member Gregory with that. And I want to just thank them for their work on this. Really, what we did here was kind of, we didn't change a whole lot of the code itself, we just kind of rearranged things, formatted it a little bit, we're trying to make it easy to read and easy for people to follow. We added links for government code, our Texas code sections that are in there, so you can look them up while you read the document on PDF. And I, we're, I'm pretty happy with what we put together, and I really enjoyed working with council member Haley on this. And because this is such an important document for the city of Castle Hills, that our government acts responsibly and represents the citizens with dignity and decorum, and gives the city of Castle Hills the government they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Joyce?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution two-oh-two-four dash oh-two dash thirteen, amending the council relations policy and code of ethics for the city council.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce, and thank you, Mr. May, for the second. I have to commend the city for being ahead. Y'all may have seen in the news, the city of San Antonio is going through a similar process, so I'm proud that we could be on the forefront of this, considering it's a revision, and this was adopted originally many years ago. So with that being said, all in favor? Okay, unanimous, thank you, Counsel. Next up, we have discussion of possible action on resolution number two-thousand-twenty-four dash oh-two dash thirteen dash A regarding annual review of the city's investment policy and investment strategy. Mr. Rappley?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. This is just our annual adoption of the investment policy. This is reviewed and prepared by Ms. Wallace. The policy has no suggested changes this year, and this is just the annual adoption by resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Do we have a motion? Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution number two-thousand-twenty-four dash zero-two dash thirteen dash A.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second? Mr. Smith, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, Counsel. And next up, we have discussion of possible action on a resolution two-thousand-twenty-four dash oh-two dash thirteen dash B, authorizing the city to enter an interlocal agreement between the city of Castle Hills and Bear County to facilitate Castle Hills' improvement of streets and infrastructure, and authorizing the city manager to execute such an agreement. Many of y'all remember that recently we partnered with the city of San Antonio and Bear County to address streets and drainage that needed to be fixed, and part of the two-thousand-twenty-four Bear County budget included a portion of dollars, exactly one million dollars, to go towards our improvements at Carrollwood and Lock Hill Selma. What you have in front of you is an agreement to formalize that so that we can get the funding from Bear County and start construction before summer comes. Mr. Rappley, did I summarize that correctly?
Yes, Mayor. So again, this ILA was for their participation, as the mayor said, with funding. Essentially, this will be for the Carrollwood Drainage Project. The purpose has established the terms, which Bear County agreed to, was reviewed by their district attorney's office, Mr. Schnall. And so we're not to exceed a million dollars that they would provide for their partnership. This includes the extension of the existing storm drains from Banning and Carrollwood up to Lock Hill Selma. And then obviously, we will, part of the project improved Lock Hill Selma on that drainage corridor. That's where the city of San Antonio will be providing their funding. We hope to bring an interlocal agreement with the city of San Antonio in the next month or two, once they're done, for about eight-hundred thousand towards this project. If you recall, we advertised for this, it was about three-point-two million for the drainage project alone. This involves reconstructed streets all the way up to Carrollwood to Lock Hill Selma. And just on a note that, you know, this was, obviously, a And just on a note that, you know, this was obviously done with um, intergovernmental cooperation uh, between the entities. Uh, right now, we're looking uh, as a bid um, not maybe till May. Um, because right now the engineers are working with SAWs and CPS on the utility locates. Uh, more than likely, SAWs is going to have to partner with us like they have in the past to adjust the um, utility lines. So that's going to have to be an agreement that goes to the SAWs board to participate in funding as well. Um, this project will also include um, but not part of the money given from Bear County, uh, the North Manton Drainage Project as well and including Glen Tower. So uh, we hope to again, uh, go out for bid if not uh, early as May, uh, possibly June um, at that point. So. But this formalizes the agreement for us to um, receive the million dollars for the county for this drainage project.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Do we have a motion? Mr. Joyce?
Well, I just have a quick question for Mr. Rapley. Um, just to make sure, I understand the, the county and the city are giving us nearly two million bucks. But it's not going to have any impact on the certificates of obligation, right? It's really going to be used for the Glen Tower Lock Hill project. Is that, is that correct?
So in conjunction, if you, um, let me get the backup to this, the, the backup has the um, the total of the project itself.
I, I believe we had programmed about five hundred thousand dollars to take uh, to do repairs upstream on Carrollwood. So we have dollars built in from the Castle Hill side and we're also rearranging from doing uh, work on Glen Tower, doing infrastructure there and finishing the infrastructure all the way up north uh, to the other side of Lock Hill.
So I think the councilman's asking about the combination of the CO dollars. When you look at the total project, it's five million dollars, five point four million dollars. Uh, almost nine hundred fifty-three thousand is the city of San Antonio's portion. That's just all Lock Hill section. And then you go down past Lock Hill, we'll put storm drains and reconstruct the street. That actually is four million, four hundred fifty-four thousand. This four million, four hundred fifty thousand will be offset by that million. So our CO money is three point four, which is majority of the drainage twenty twenty uh, twenty twenty-three CO dollars. And incorporating some of the CO street dollars as well because it is reconstruction.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
But the bulk of it is the twenty twenty-three drainage COs.
Counsel, Mr. May.
Mayor, I move that the city council adopt resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero two dash thirteen.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second? Ms. Haley, any discussion? Mr. Rapley?
And uh, Councilman, just so, and if you kind of put it in a illustration is, we originally had scoped out to take care of the portion of Carrollwood that has the in and uh, that has sort of the dip in the street. Where we were just going to go storm drains, but with the county's participation, this helps us get all the way up to Lock Hill to tie in to fixing Lock Hill with San Antonio's assistance through funding.
All in favor? Posed? Abstained? Let the record flow then, Mr. Uh, Smith abstained, but passes. Uh, next, we have announcements by, uh, I'm sorry, update discussion and possible action from the city manager related to the comprehensive plan priorities. Mr. Joyce?
Well, Mayor and Counsel, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Joyce.
Well, I was just going to introduce you. Uh, Mr. Rapley has updated this thing that he gave us last month. There's a few updates here, but I'll, I'll let him walk y'all through it.
Okay, Mayor and Counsel, as you recall, last month I went through all of the comp plan priorities and I had uh, updates. And since that's transpired, I, in the memo in the back, I just have updates in the red font. And I'll just kind of go through those real quick where I do have updates. Uh, we talked about um, the speed limit study. Um, Ardua is finalizing the speed study with a recommendation. Uh, we hope to bring that forward next month for a consideration of a comprehensive speed uh, for council's review. Uh, the next one, um, the VIA, uh, and talk about service. Um, we will be having something come forward in regards to VIA soon for city council's discussion and review and consideration. Uh, we met with um, VIA yesterday to talk about some of the things they're doing as well. Um, item G, where we talked about uh, recommendation city council in regards to taxes and media property attorney uh, uh, properties. That one will be directed to zoning commission for review and consideration in March. Um, under P, where we talked about um, inspect and maintain drainage from North Manton, Lock Hill, Salina, Antonian, this corridor. Uh, we reached out to Bear County Commissioner Grant Moody's office to see if they would assist with cleanup of the channel. Um, Mr. Harada is working on getting the equipment in combination with potentially the county's assistant to help us clean up that channel um, here soon. Uh, we hope to get that started in the coming weeks as well. Um, the commons, originally the Parks and Projects Committee were supposed to have met this past Saturday, but we had to um, postpone the meeting to the twenty-fourth of February. And in that time, um, Ms. Councilman Joyce and I and Councilwoman Danes met with our engineers to get a cost estimate of all the amenities we're looking at placing into the commons. And so this will be reviewed by the Parks and Projects uh, on the twenty-fourth. And so next month, we should have some recommendations uh, for consideration of council, which are tied to funding next month. And then um, the one here under B that talks about the Mimosa Cremaria project here, uh, Councilman Joyce, Councilwoman Danes, uh, along with myself, met with Bain, Medina Bain to talk about um, this project, moving this forward. You know, it was idle as far as um, getting this mo- going. And so they've, uh, Bain, Medina Bain, our new engineers, has taken up the uh, um, taken on the project and they're working on getting a, a design and cost estimates to continue this project. Um, we're going to be revisiting um, what that project may look like. And then part of the comp plan and Councilman Joyce can add to this, but was looking at a linear park concept and some of this channel way to um, assist with the trail system. Correct, sir?
Yeah, thanks, Ryan. I just wanted to add that um, the engineers were not particularly enthusiastic or uh, interested too much in the idea of a linear park in there for engineering reasons, not because of anything that uh, they just don't like about it. It's just, engineering wise, it would be very difficult. However, they are going to consider putting a trail in some fashion, you know, it won't be the whole channel, but whether it's up high, whatever the width of it might be, we're not sure, but they're looking into that now. So they're going to give us a proposal to complete the project, either as designed or with the possible addition of that trail. So we'll probably see that in the next few weeks.
And if you recall, Counsel, we do have funding allocated that was out of the two thousand twenty-three um, COs. So the project does have dollars associated with it. So um, as we move forward, we'll be bringing things forward for council's consideration and or updates on the project. Um, and depending on funding and uh, what modifications may be made in the design um, that might have to be done in phases as well. Um, but we're reevaluating that project as part of this comp plan priority. Um, under the strategic priorities for economic development, the only update here is the EDC will have the town hall meetings this month to gather input from the community, um, provide the community with an opportunity to discuss economic development and potential benefit to our city. The town hall meetings will be February seventeenth, the Saturday ten AM, February twentieth, six PM, and February twenty-eighth at seven PM. Councilman, do you have anything on that?
I'll hold for later. Thank you.
And then under priority two, we had branding. Um, Councilman Joyce and Councilwoman Danes uh, along with myself, met with Creative Civilizations, discussed the possibility of assisting the city with the development of a communications plan, uh, branding efforts and assisting with public relations uh, to promote the comprehensive plan and its priorities. Um, they're going to develop a proposal and provide it to us for future considerations. And that's kind of in a nutshell, the uh, updates on these. Obviously, next month we'll have um, further updates on those other priorities and then things related to this for council to consider next month. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. That's very helpful. I do have a question about um, item three A, that one of the priorities with urgency. I'm wondering if there's anything we can do here on the day as to maybe help expedite that. That was the security item. Where we're going to talk to chief and maybe some of the others who might have expertise in that area. That was uh, kind of an urgent matter as a result of from uh, an actual shooting on, on Shalimar. So uh, if there's anything we can do to, to, to help expedite that, please let us know.
Okay, I'll, I'll get with the chief and um, get in touch with you and hopefully we can uh, come up with uh, some ideas or solutions and then if it does involve council's um, um, approval, we'll bring it forward. So. I think I skipped over B though, uh, about the parking situation continuing Shalimar. Obviously, we're reviewing that and we'll probably bring something next month for consideration of council on that one as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. No action. We'll move forward to announce the mayor and city council members and items of community interest. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, it's been a great month since our last meeting for ribbon cuttings in Castle Hills. We've had three just this month with uh, for Bodymind Systems, Suporius Pizza and River City Strength, and I want to congratulate them all. And I want to thank the Castle Hills Women's Club and the Castle Hills Garden Club for uh, putting on these events.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Haley?
I sleep good every night, knowing that we've got people working for us in this city who work so hard to keep us safe and care about what they do and have a professional way about them being here tonight and seeing what chief said about those three officers and thinking about Wayne Wagner and how I could say I raised him, but that's not really true. But I, I was here, he, he, I was here when he started. So I watched him and what a, what a great night and what a jewel of a community we have and the people that we have to help us. And I'm grateful for that.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor and Counsel. So the next uh, Castle Hills Historical Society meeting will be on the second day of March, on Saturday at ten AM. And speaking of those who never sleep, uh, Judy Crawford was the driving force in our last meeting. She's come up with a list of fifteen to twenty ways uh, that this city can celebrate its seventy-fifth anniversary. And I think everyone here would be interested to know that most of those suggestions have to do with branding. How it is we want to message to the outer world at the same time celebrate it. So I just want to focus attention on that day because right now it's a nucleus of about six people. They expand to about a dozen. But as many ideas and driving forces for each of those celebrations, remember, this is less than two years away at this point. Twenty twenty-six, that's our seventy-fifth. So I just encourage anyone that can attend to do so, and if you can't, bring ideas.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to uh, to thank Councilwoman Haley and Councilman Smith for the good work on that ethics thing. I appreciate that very much. Um, and secondly, I would like to reiterate what Mr. Rapley mentioned about the town halls, and I have some very pretty little flyers here if anybody's interested, but it it's a terrific committee and I'm really excited about working with them. They're asking really good questions. They're doing some good homework, some good research. So I think we would all benefit uh, if we can manage to make one of those meetings. Saturday, the uh, seventeenth at ten, Tuesday, the twentieth at six, or Wednesday, the twenty-eighth at seven. Um, we're going to be talking about economic development and how it can benefit Castle Hills. So we'd love to see y'all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Ms. Danes?
Um, we keep pushing, all the, our announcements keep going farther and farther out. But um, yes, just a reminder, Fiesta Castle Hills is um, coming up. The committee is working very hard on it already. If you guys, if anybody out there is interested in getting involved, there's lots of volunteer opportunities. Um, so please reach out to Judy Crawford or Norma McClelland and they would be happy to have you um, volunteer with them. They have given out Fiesta medals and they're made up, I think they're ten dollars. Is that, am I have that right? Yes. And they are for sale here at um, City Hall. Um, and then not to be outdone, there is going to be a complete solar eclipse on April the eighth. So mark your calendar and get your glasses.
Thank you, Ms. Danes. Um, so I have a small update. It's a big deal, but I prefer to do a formal recognition, but since we're here, I wanted to share. Uh, it's when Chief Lottewig joined the team and, whoa, those years kind of blur together now, Chief.
Five years.
Nineteen. One of the first things that I asked him was if he had experience with uh, increasing the ISO scores and ISO is the insurance services organization that basically ranks departments. Uh, and we had been a uh, three out of ten uh, for the longest time. And, and my goal of always doing things a little bit better across the board, uh, I had asked chief about working towards number two. And that had been something that we've been working on for the last four years. Uh, we received notice a couple of weeks ago that Castle Hills has been upgraded to an ISO two, which is a, a big deal, puts us in the top sixteen percent of the country with regards to departments. And aside from the prestige of being an ISO two, it also means that our homeowners will, homeowners and business owners will see a potentially uh, a savings on their insurance because insurance companies know that there's a higher standard of fire service, uh, and not just fire service, but also dispatch service as well and in prevention. So uh, thank you, Chief, for spearheading that and for making it possible and making the department a little bit better. Uh, Mr. Rapley?
Uh, Mayor and Counsel, I, as the mayor mentioned, the ISO, I sent you all an email earlier that kind of has a FAQ and details the full report that shows our change in score and what we've done to achieve that. And then also, I just want everybody to know, uh, you see the mesh fence out there and Mr. Harada is always working on improving our commons and um, we are moving forward with uh, taking the, the small bridge out there. I know it was sort of unique to the commons, but we are going to look at doing a, a concrete apron that ties to the parking lot that's ADA compliant, those kind of things. So um, that's why you see the, the fence out there. So I just want to make sure and thank Mr. Harada for all the work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Okay, I want to attain a motion to adjourn, Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Smith, all in favor? Okay, it is seven thirty-one, meeting is adjourned. Everybody have a good evening and thank you for being here with us tonight.